Nice. Okay, we need to approve the agenda each. Got a second, anything? Got a motion in a second, all those in favor? And then the minutes from July one?
Motion to approve. July thirty-one, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Google's just written right place, okay?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion, got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Continue on, we'll get them.
All right, we'll get them later. Okay, general public concerns. Nobody, okay? So we can move on to the. All right, so we need to open the public hearing.
I am a motion of public hearing.
Oh, second, eight thirty-two.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, discussion on the Sally Port improvement.
Well, this is basically the hearing for the. I don't know if we call an expansion to the jail, but it's a. Basically a Sally Port, which is a structure where inmates are received. Either from our county or outside the county to be booked into our jail. It's more of a secure facility. Mainly for safety of the general public, safety of our officers. Safety of the people there receiving into the jail. So currently they're unloaded on the street. When, whether ice. Is to prevent problems. It's something that almost every jail has, so it does. Anything else you wanna add, Dean?
Do they have that many prisoners?
We've got a few. We get, we're getting quite a few from pursuit where I'm from Webster County again, so.
And our jail is pretty full most of the time.
I know when uh, Webster County was going through their problems, not getting any jailers there, we, we helped cut a few for them. Murder suspects and everything, so.
A little more violent crime job, you could have people too that would. You know, upset people that might try to do something, you never know.
So is this a drive-through or this just the one pull in, back out? I'm assuming it's a drive-through.
So it is a drive-through Bruce, that's adjacent to the building on Fifth Street. Right there, um, as far as the building, it will be uh, high-speed drive doors in incoming and outgoing. Uh, so everything is card red and first eighty-two, it's tip on and open the door, you got to hard in, hard out. Both of the doors as well, and the chambers can get the ability to open the doors inside. Outside of that, it's just uh. What we like to say, drive instead of building, but it's much more than.
Something we've talked about for. Last November. Exploring multiple, multiple different options. This is the plan, kind of finally settled on. Due to the fact of the codes, which were pretty extensive, that you have to follow. You know, you wanna do this, now the code won't allow you to do that. We talked about putting the alley, but by the time you do, put two firewalls on it, now it isn't big enough. So, this is where we're at.
Yeah, there was a lot of different alternatives, everything like that, from full building expansion all the way down to. Pretty much what we ended up with here, uh, is just a, a facility that's size, um, receiving transport van. Um, presented purposes, um, that's what we use for largest vehicle to transfer inmates. Um, in there, it's room to walk around, um, all of the, the cars, transport vans, SUVs, etc.
So what is the rough, roughly approximately?
Nine hundred and some square feet, believe it thousand, right, just short enough square feet overall.
You know, we had to be careful, we didn't do anything inside the jail. Cause we're grandfathered in, or we'd have to make all kinds of improvements inside there, so.
Yeah, this is pretty much an exterior receiving.
Receiving shipping, fine ship.
In and out. What about this item, where it says approving the plan specification in the form of contract?
So that will be, uh, your close public hearing first on that, so this is the, this is the ability for the public to provide any input, if they have any on the project?
Was there any calls or anybody write? We didn't receive any?
No public comment?
No letters, no nothing.
I had one call, they want to know what's the cost and why we need it. Just explained why we needed it, but what's the cost gonna be?
Cost estimate, um, started at six, coiled down a little bit, five thirty-five, five fifty-ish. But that's, that's an estimate on it, uh, we don't know what it'll be, uh, I'm not. Speculate of anything right now, we'll give it ten more minutes and then we'll see if anybody provides a bid, see if it really worth the cost.
So we gotta carry a conversation for ten minutes? So that'd be at eight thirty-seven? Yeah, I just. All the favor? I just wanted to write it down on my paperwork, Dave, before I.
It's basically cement block. Inside against, you know, it's got a fire cement firewall between this and the existing jail. It's gonna have a little bit of brick veneer with steel panels above it. What I call a flat roof, but it's a sloped roof, and then to an interior drain. Is that right? And then two overhead doors, one on each side, right through, right out.
And it is, it is essentially a scalable facility on its own that will be connected in on each edge, just because it's structural. It is completely self-supporting, within itself, we're unable to use anything, does the built-in for structural components of it? And mean a separation of firewall as well in there, so there's a pair of bit wall that does extend to, to be past existing. But it's just that inside wall, the rest of the building is. What was also cost issues that we didn't even hide or.
So I, what I call the weather. Keeping the rain out, I mean, between, it's either gotta go higher or lower. Goes lower.
Any, any other questions from any board members, facility? I think your next agenda is to, you just have to approve the plans, um, specifications, form of contracts for your project?
Okay, so do we have those specifications and everything?
They've been sent digitally, um.
I don't know if we have them in front of us.
So there's, there's three dead ones that are really some part of this, um, I get all of those compiled, if you guys, the, my law are copying with all of those incorporated.
Probably we've seen this on the public safety side, we get to the, what you have right now. The final, the final uh, plans, specifications and that, everything was. I mean, we.
Yeah, you eventually saw it read down.
That's all gone, this has gone through public safety, but beans, we're talking. Money, it's through the county, that's why we're here discussing it, but like Rick said, we had discussion on this for.
And this basically is a joint city, the city is gonna contribute cost. To them, cause it is, it's a, a tool, basically. That they are also gonna be using, so they will be contributing, it'll be run through the public safety, the city will be paying thirty percent. Of the cost. Over ten years.
So we need to go ahead and approve that though, okay? So do we have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the plans, the specifications in the form of contract for said Sally Port.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, motion, the second, all of them in favor? Okay, unanimous motion carries. Okay.
We have four minutes, so, yeah, so in at eight. We'll use our phones on that, just to make sure everybody is right, eight forty-one right now, so. We'll need to check, I know Sam is sitting out here, so they'll deliver the. You know, so we'll need to go collect at eight forty-five, cut off anybody else, we're in pretty late, and we'll, we'll open right here. And read them aloud. So you got, you have another deny, you got four minutes, you can, you can use it.
Seen, you wanna do, uh, Kenny? Kenny, letter?
At eight thirty-seven.
Yeah, Kenny, uh, Kenny Borland has, my deputy has decided he wants to retire after twenty-four years for us, which is wonderful. Gets a job, gets some big shoes to go, well, Kenny's got a little. But, uh, yeah, he's gonna retire and, uh, I guess he wants to enjoy life a little bit, so.
Good for him.
He's got grandkids and everything that he wants to spend some more time with, so, good for him. Twenty-four years, that's wonderful.
Those grandkids change everything.
Yep, so, like to. Have you guys accepted resignation and, uh, we'd like to fill that position, please?
I would make a motion to accept with regret. Yeah, I still think he could last a couple more years.
I think he could, but he decided he doesn't want to.
Well, I'd make a motion to accept it with regret.
Yeah, but I'd second Bruce's motion with the, already thank you for this twenty-four years of service, so.
Whatever size shoes, it's gonna take something to fill it.
Yeah, he's done a good job, he's, he's been good for the community, I mean, he really has, he's a very good community.
Very much so.
All my deputies been here for quite a while, so.
Would you rate to see him go, as Bruce said?
All right, all those in favor? Hey, unanimous motion carries, all right.
Like, see, you've already put an ad out for, yep, we're gonna move forward with this.
All right, thank you.
All right, should we get, we have two more minutes, so, um, let's skip the medical examiner one, let's go down to accept and place on file. The Humboldt County Sanitary Landfill Commission Financial Department ending June thirtieth. Is that you, Rick?
Well, it is, well, I'm actually.
I know you're, yeah, you're on the book. They're taking nothing really.
Hopefully here in the next few years, this will get to be a less amount or cost anyway. And, uh, but everything out there's been running fairly smooth lately. Dry weather's great for landfills, it's not great for farmers, but it's wonderful for landfills, you, it just solves a lot of problems. So, things have been going good out there lately, and, uh, I think they were just out here this last week, you did another inspection and we didn't hear nothing back.
Uh, I got a couple of willow trees over by the outlet that we gotta remove.
That was about it.
How many more years we gotta monitor that?
December twenty-sixth. Is our thirty-year. Oh, unfortunately, no.
Unfortunately, no.
They go on forever, cause the other one that was closed, I don't know when, they, they still monitor that one. But the testing goes way down, the cost, that the DNR will still inspect them.
Okay.
So, it, it never goes away. So they would say, and you can never use it for anything other than to grow grass. So, you can't like, only just ski resort out there, I don't know. It's gotta sit there, it's just gotta sit there.
You don't see anything wrong with the financial report, it makes sense to you. I'd make a motion that we approve and place on file. Humboldt County Sanitary Landfill Commission Financial Port that ended June thirtieth of this year.
Okay, we got a motion to. Need a second, all those in favor? Unanimous, areas, okay, it is eight forty-six.
In check and see what bids we have in here.
Yep, so these are some bid opening forms, if you guys wanna write anything down to tab on it. Uh, if you guys want to, you don't have to, we'll fill this out, send it, or you don't have to. Um, thank you all for, uh. Bidding, we have two bidders today, we have Sam from. Out of, out of Humboldt, and we have Jensen Builders out of Fort Dodge. Um, we will read, uh, we will open and receive both these bids here right now. Just so everybody's aware, if anybody comes in right now, we will not accept their bid, they're deemed late. On it, so we will have two bidders on this project, uh, in no particular quarter. Uh, we'll start with same construction out of Humboldt, Iowa. Bitter status one is present. Bid bond is present and appears to be correct. Addendum number one is acknowledged, addendum number two is acknowledged, addendum number three is acknowledged. We have a base bid in the amount of six hundred fifty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and zero cents. Six five nine one nine seven point two zero zero. Alternate number one, which is a substantial completion change date, um, no price change on that one, so same as the base bid. Next, we have Jensen Builders out of Fort Dodge, Iowa. Bid bond is present. Bitter status form is present. Addendum one, two, and three. Are acknowledged. Have a base bid of eight hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred dollars, is eight, nine, two. Three, zero, zero, and no cents. And no dollars for the alternate bid date. Uh, this concludes the public bid opening on it. Thank you all for, uh, submission, um, supervisor will take it under consideration here thereafter.
So the estimate was six hundred?
We were at six hundred, we boiled down five, we got it down to five thirty and then jumped back up to five eighty. Uh, we ran it through two different scenarios, Bruce, one, if we were tight. On it, locally tight, and it was about that five eighty number, we ran it through the other scenario, which was the standard. RMS method, as far as quantity takeoff, we came in about seven eighty. On it, so about two hundred thousand dollar difference, depending on what you want to, uh, which method you wanna use on that, it's pretty variable. Overall, um, I was along the line, they didn't say beforehand, I was gonna be a seven fifteen. Going into this rig, where my gut was telling me that this was gonna land. Um, so I'm not real surprised at the six, sixty-ish, six fifty-nine-ish. Overall, um, on the project, but I know that's over from what you guys wanna see in here, so. It is up to, it is up to, you know, supervisors here, um, but any of the safeties was going to opine on it tomorrow. Uh, you, you guys have, you guys have time to cable. Get input from public safety and then make a decision next week versus immediately right now, today.
The city's gonna be involved also paying. I think we need to have time to consider this, cause it is, when we started off, it was, like you said. Quite a bit lower than this. No longer we looked at, price just keep going up because all of code.
There are a lot.
Plus, construction costs have gone up.
They have, they have leveled. Yeah, um, there's pretty volatile, you see some volatility here on there, kind of those, the local scenario and. You know, the small project scenario, um, the volatility has lessened, but the costs are still up, so. But the volatility is.
If something goes down, something else goes up. Banker goes down, price steel goes up.
Or it goes down, they found, we can make an extra dollar, so it doesn't really go down, construction. You know, they get a, they get a mark that, so, I would say that the bids are responsive and responsible. It is just up to you guys if this fits into your planned budget and what you guys wanna see for facility there. And it is your, is decisions whether or not you want to move forward.
Well, based on Rick's suggestion. I would make a motion of able consideration of bids and potential award. Supervisor, county level, pending our discussion of the public safety, yeah. I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Unanimous motion carries.
But I, I gotta ask Cole, but did we be unable to attend our public safety meeting?
Yeah, I got parked where it's seven thirty, so I'll be in it.
So yeah, you get full disclosure of what's going on.
You want me there tomorrow morning?
I don't think you. I think at this point, we're okay. Yeah, I think, I, you know, as the plans. And then we cut what we could cut out of them.
I can't cut anything more and get approved.
We asked the question, we've been through this for, seems like.
We're trending on that. Yes, well, um, I'll be available by phone tomorrow morning.
You will.
You guys, if you have a question, just call me.
I don't think. But I don't know what question I'd have for you, but just in case.
Bear in mind it'd be between probably eight and nine.
Eight and nine, I don't think it works, I see, I'll call it, pick it up.
So what is the, what would be the timeframe, if you accept this, or if you. Throw it back to rebid? Would they start on it if it's fall?
No, I, I don't. There, there would need to be a reason that we need.
You'd have to re-change, change it somehow.
I, I don't, there's no, we value, we try to value everything we can out of this. Bruce, overall, and this is where we, this is as lean as we can get for facility, to meet the requirements.
Yeah, I mean, the interior of this building, basically a block wall. It's just bare bones, but it's, it's the world's most expensive garage.
Two doors, so, but it is.
Two-door expensive garage, because of the cold.
You know, our hands are tied, we, like, I can't take any. Um, you, you guys are looking forward to get this to fit, where it's gonna fit, and to make this thing actually work and function appropriately, this is. That's, that's the market we have.
So then if we, if you accept it and bring it back next week. What's the timeframe on?
February completion on it.
What did you put on that?
I believe February, completion for everything.
So it would be started this?
Yeah, yep, this is for still base business completion, you know, right at the beginning of twenty twenty-four. So that is right now, we put an alternate date in there to throw it out to July, July of last, next year. And it didn't change any costs on there, we wanted to see if we.
Maybe reduce the cost of, I don't know, but although we did have a working days, we didn't want them to start this fall and drag it out.
They weren't able to.
Because there are stipulations, so they can't tear everything up and then walk away for three months and then. Like this fall, we're all the man out and do a bunch of work, and then let it set all through winter, so our employees have to walk. It's a mess to deal with, they started.
That's a good idea, so that was, that was the alternate bid day.
Ben, Ben would be mad when you drove by and looked at your mess.
It's small, it's contained, but. The, that's the, that's the synopsis of the past several months of the work that we've done, what come the lights with the vid that's higher than we anticipated, but. Also not surprising.
That's what I hear, I'm, I. I haven't seen too many bits on the news that come in lower than.
I got one last week.
Oh, did you?
Did school project, twenty-seven million dollar project. Come in low on their five hundred million and a half bucks. So, but, uh, anyways, um, Trish, can you scan these and email these to me when we're done? On it, and I'll take this, we'll get this filled out, repopulated, sent back. And then call me tomorrow morning, and, uh, I will be out of your ear at least for the rest of the day.
Well. We need more than six hundred thousand, this almost has to be.
A table thing, so I think our next thing on the agenda will have table.
Kind of what I was thinking, so, okay, so we have, is that a motion?
Yes, I'll move to table, the, the.
Okay, do we have a second?
I will second.
All those in favor? Okay, so we're. You're up, we're early.
Thank you too.
Yeah, make sure you do.
Yeah, we'll plan some, a little party down there, so.
Morning. I have two items for today's agenda. Uh, the first is to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one. Uh, for transportation safety improvement program grant application. Basically, the Iowa DOT has a T SIP grant available. Uh, transportation safety, and we are applying for the alternating stoplights. That I'm sure you've seen the DOT use on some of their projects. They have grants available for counties to be able to purchase those, so when we're doing. Our small construction projects, or we're doing patching, we can set these up. These'll be affordable, and then instead, instead of having flaggers on either side directing traffic. Those two guys can be in, working with everybody else. Those two guys can be in working with everybody else and people will just follow the stoplights.
Wow, that'd be nice.
Um, like I said, they, they have a grant that's available every year. Applications are due middle of next week. I've got most of all the application filled out, the only thing that I'm missing is, is this uh, this resolution. Where we do have a roll call vote.
Does this have to be targeted towards a portable traffic lights?
There's a limited number of things that you can spend for tran- transportation safety, uh, we can do paved shoulders where we've got. Uh, accident history, we did that east of Livermore here a couple of years ago. Um. Another one that they've been doing is wider edge line striping where they've been going with six inch instead of four inch. Um. This is one that Webster County and Hamilton County have applied for over the last couple of years and, and gotten approved. So I feel fairly confident that we'll end up getting this approved as well.
And you know, we've talked about in the past, the. Flashing stop signs, as you will.
Yeah, that doesn't qualify on this one.
It doesn't qualify on this one, but it is out along the lines of the safety.
Right now, no.
Right now, okay.
Uh. Because the, the MUTCD, the MUTCD doesn't consider that a. Uh. Guideline, yes. It's coming, but it's not yet.
Cause if it's a grant, then they are very specific about certain.
Right.
Criteria.
We've, we've applied for, we applied for an H sub grant back in, no, December. And we've been approved, but I haven't heard any more on that one. Uh, that's for speed feedback signs going into our smaller communities.
Good, so that's good too.
Uh, they reached out to me here two months ago and talked about that one, but I haven't seen any paperwork formalizing it yet, so.
Okay, those are nice.
Just makes you think.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one for the public safety improvement program grant.
I'll second it.
Here we have a motion in a second, we'll do a roll call vote, Lee.
Hi.
Lonely, I, Peterson.
Hi.
Rimers.
Hi.
Undergrowth.
Hi.
Okay.
Sign. The second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve a funding agreement with the Iowa DOT for Murray Bridge. As you guys know, we were awarded the uh competitive highway. Bridge program grant here, uh. What, last month, I think they notified us about that. Month, month and a half ago, um, where they awarded us two million dollars towards the replacement of the Murray Bridge. This is the funding agreement that is tied to that. We look at the actual funding. It's. Five hundred thousand of the county bridge construction fund. One point five million of the county bridge construction fund HBP program. Um. Basically, that's the accounts that they'd be taking. The two million out of pay for this portion of the bridge. So, and then uh. The county is looking at using some of our HDP money as well as local to cover our side of it. So.
No, this is just basically the. This is a quality funding agreement.
This is the funding that's tied to it, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve this funding agreement with the Iowa DOT for the Murray Bridge project.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Oh, oh, second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
I, I.
We've got the ideal route, we don't have, we haven't begun. Trying to acquire land yet, um, talking to a couple of the landowners, they're favor of it. There's one that's against, um. That'll be part of the engineering bid. That uh. Chuck Britton is working on right now, so. Um. We'll end up trying to negotiate, if it comes to it, we'll. Go the other out.
Yeah.
Uh, beyond that. Last week, we got the concrete and everything torn out over here and got dirt leveled out, I don't know if you've been on the south side of the building yet, but. It's very nice.
I do it by this way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was surprised.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They did a good job.
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
When they brought in that dirt, did they have much sod in it, was it good dirt?
It's pretty good dirt.
So we don't have to worry about the sod decomposing and then settle with them.
No, no, it was pretty, it was. Yeah, it was pretty good. So. Um, and we left a small pile here for.
Fill.
Yep. Fill in the low spots, make it easier to mow.
I know Paul's pretty happy with that.
Yep. Yeah, and I know he's, he's mentioned, he's got a little bit of concrete that he wants to pour afterwards and then put a rail. Round out there. Yep. No, they got that done, uh, north of Hardy, I don't know if you guys have been up there, we widened a box culvert. Uh, almost up to the county line. Uh, widen to eight feet on both sides.
Yeah, our guys do that.
Yeah. Yep, that turned out to be a nice project as well, uh, we're in the process of reclaiming.
Four in place type thing, wasn't it?
Yeah. Port to floor, port side walls, port to ceiling. So, um. Our guys are in the process trying to reclaim ditch right now on two hundred and sixtieth street between. Hawaii and Juniper, I believe. Um. One of those where we pulled back up onto the road. So we staked the right away last fall, the farmer stayed out of the right away, um. We're reclaiming it now, so.
Do you own that with the maintainers on?
Yes. All right.
Where we had on that park road, I've been asked that three or four people.
Gosh Park Road has finally been staked by Mid-American. Uh, gas company has all of theirs staked on the east side of the road. Uh, overhead line, they got their stake, I believe, last week, they finally finished. Uh, we're waiting on utilities, I've got a.
I figured that, I told them, but.
I've got a preliminary estimate, uh, from a contractor. For what it would cost to do the work, we're gonna end up having to send it to letting, it's over the hundred thousand dollar threshold, like. It's about two fifty.
Wow.
So, we'll end up sending it out for letting for that project, um.
Can we bid then?
Can we bid it? We can, but we're gonna be giving up doing something else that we do, you know, I mean, we can send our county crews out there and our county staff, but it'll take. I'd say a month and a half probably for us to do, so that's a month and a half of not doing everything else that we do.
Might be cost effective.
Uh, I talked to my foreman, we had a foreman meeting last week. Where we discussed it and. I mean, you're either, you're either throwing your resources at that project or you're continuing doing everything else. Blading roads, mowing, fixing culverts and tile. Um, you know.
Yeah, if they didn't, if they didn't have a listing.
Right. So, uh, Dave will work on finalizing those plans and then we'll bring him through for letting.
It's on, out here on two sixtieth, we're gonna be raising roads, anybody live on that road?
There is one resident that lives on that road, we're not doing anything from, from her place east. To the nearest intersection, uh, you know where Les Bacon lives?
Yeah.
Yeah, just north of Les. Uh, and then back west, I can't think of the lady that lives there off the top of my head. But basically, we're, we're raising the road in between two dredged dish crossings.
Yeah.
All right.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Hey, discussion action on four house server backup system, Chris, is that you? Do you want a piece of those now?
No, just give them to me.
Okay.
Love it, just later sitting in this file. You guys need the, you guys need the originals. Um, just yeah. Nick, you just wanted to see how long I can stand there, couldn't you? All right, we ready?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh. In unfortunate timing, we got an update on July ten. That the current server backup system that we utilize here. That has historically been run through solutions. Um, was up for renewal, that is, we reached the end of our previous three-year agreement. Um, again, uh, they, I got the notification on July tenth that the current agreement expires July thirtieth. So it really didn't give us a great deal of time. Plus the, um, I guess, just to explain the timeframe real quick, plus the sales rep I was working with for alternatives. Ended up having a family emergency and has actually got me my quotes last, late last week. On his personal time, so. I'm taking care of that stuff, so that's why that's a little bit delayed, um. The system that I had quote, had them quote, excuse me, is a system called by the name of unit trends. Um, it is a system that I'm familiar with, we used it at Iowa Central. The difference between Datto, which is what we use now, the main difference that we're gonna see is besides cost, and I'll get to that in a second. Is Datto, the system we're currently using can only be purchased through. A managed service provider, so a solutions or someone like that, you can't, we as Humboldt County can't go and buy Datto and utilize that service. Um. Obviously, unit trends, we can. Now, to, I suppose the main part, I got, I had them get me two different quotes. Uh, one on a yearly, it's, it's a three-year agreement regardless, but it's, here's what would we pay yearly versus what we'd pay all upfront. So the, to give you, to give you an idea, the Datto was gonna go up this year. And it was going to be, uh, for Datto, their solution was going to be twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars per year. So over the course of three years, um, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty. Plus, with this being the renewal of the three-year agreement, there was, there would be a charge for an install. From solutions at a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. To have the new hardware put in place.
Different from what we already have.
Yeah, it would be updated hardware, yep, yep.
And that roughly, did they give you an idea, it's ten days, ten hours?
They, they really don't, I imagine with all the counties they handle, it's hard to cookie cutter that, um, but no, as far as on the estimate, they didn't give an, an estimated hourly. You know, how many hours they're only.
I mean, but you're kind of, you should have a rough, it ain't gonna take days, is it?
No, no, it, it, you're probably looking at a couple of, probably three, I would say three to four hours, just to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Rough idea, well.
Right, sure, sure. Now, um. So, that would, that's the Datto, that's our current system that we have in place up for renewal. The current system, the U, or, excuse me, the quoted system I had then is the unit trend system. Um, which actually is quoted for more storage. Um, about twice as much storage as what the Datto system was quoted for. Um, because, and I'll get to this in a minute, when we talk about the extracurriculars, Ben and I have been working together on, on coming up with some stuff for them. So this unit trend system, about twice as much storage as the Datto that was quoted through solutions. And for three years, if we paid it all upfront. It would be nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So that saves us just north of seventeen thousand over the course of three years.
In nineteen five hundred and three.
Yep, one nine, five, three, nine.
Okay.
Yep.
That's for three years.
Three years, so we save seventeen, we would save seventeen thousand. Over the course of the three-year agreement, going, using unit trends over Datto, which we have, we have no choice, we have to go through like a solutions or somebody. To use.
What about, is there any install?
Yeah, uh, there is, uh, part of the, it's a one-time onboarding cost, they call it, it's. Twelve ninety-eight, so thirteen hundred dollars. But they remote in, they help you get it set up. Um, to your environment, um, as far as the local backups that'll be here, plus their cloud environment. Um, so that's, that's already included in, so that won't be.
And you're familiar with this system because you've used it.
Yeah, yeah.
So you know it's gonna do what's needed to do.
Absolutely.
So it's gonna be about twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars in total.
Correct, yep, yep, that's if we pay upfront.
If we pay upfront.
Yep. Yep. Um, the yearly, I guess if we did it per year, um, it is. Seven thousand, six ninety-two per year, um, if I remember, I roughly mathed it in my head, it's like eleven hundred and some dollars. Cheaper to pay all upfront over the course of three years, in the grand scheme of things, not a significant amount, but it is still a savings. Oops, sorry, cool. Um.
Now, is there a, like, say in three years, if there's an update? Just like solutions, is, will there be an additional cost, will there be maintenance?
Uh, so, well, how, the way unit friends works is they will actually, same as, same as the dad was doing now. At the end of the three-year agreement, if we agree to renew, that, yeah, we're, we're digging it, it's doing what we want, it, it meets our, our fiscal needs. They send you a whole new hardware replacement, it's a three-year cycle hardware replacement, free of charge. You get, they help you get everything set back up, copied over to the new one. And you're off to the races again, so there's not, it's, it's all part of the three-year agreement, so. Yeah, you'd be looking at the, I don't know if they actually broke it, I think just part of the service, the appliance bundle, I think it's all. Broken, or it's into that, they didn't give me a super itemized bill, just the three main subjects, but yes, I, I did ask that question and I know that's how it worked. Um, uh, when we had him at Iowa Central as well, so.
Comparing apples to apples, you're confident with solutions in this new. Other group could. Pick a goal and we never lose them, plus we'd have double story.
Right, well, the Datto, the Datto will go away because, and that, and that's also why we would have, there's the other, there's the other kicker to the cost of Datto. That isn't in the quote, is that we didn't renew the silver agreement with solutions this year. Now that I'm in place, we don't need to spend that eighteen thousand dollars for them. To tell Trish or whoever to crawl around on the floor and unplug this and plug it back in type of thing. So that's where we incur extra service fees through solutions when they do, when they would have to transition over this data or. Copy information or anything like that. And unit trends, we'd be able to do, we'd be able to handle all that. I say we, me, you, whatever, cause that's my position. Handle all that in-house.
You and your staff.
Yes, yes, me and all, me, when, when Bruce gets in off the road and wants to come in and help out, him and Bruce and I'll get it handled. But yes, um, as far as from a functionality standpoint and a reliability standpoint, the courthouse, the county would notice no difference. The, the main difference for me is outside of cost savings from an administrative side, I actually, because of how data works, I still don't have. The, the main difference for me is outside of cost savings from an administrative side, I actually, because of how data works, I still don't have. Full access to all our stuff through Datto, I have to. I have to use solutions as a proxy to access our stuff.
Okay.
Whereas with the unit trends, it's ours and ours alone. If we need to test something, we need to get access to something, even it's a, even if it's a folder that got accidentally deleted. I don't have to put in a call in to solutions. Wait for them to decide how important it is, and it could be a few days, whereas. You know, this drainage folder got deleted, crap, what can we do? Give me ten minutes, we'll have it back.
Well, I haven't heard anything that would make me think that going to the unit trend system isn't a way good idea. Cost savings, easier to work with.
Yeah.
Chris's familiarity with it.
Yep, absolutely.
I like the idea of paying it upfront, that's, that is a bit more than the yearly fee from solutions, but still. It's a savings, the whole thing is a cost savings, for once, we got good news.
Yeah, right, yeah, that, I was, I was genuinely floored when they came back with that cost when that versus.
Well, we have more control of our data.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, solutions is.
Well, solutions have been sold to somebody.
Yeah.
Yes.
New York, so it's not.
Yeah.
Friendly as.
So it used to be, yeah, yeah.
And they'd be willing to. Put this over like soon?
Yeah, um, if I can get, if we get the full, full blessing today on the unit trends, I could probably have that. Either here late this week, maybe early next, maybe a week from today.
So we'd be July thirtieth.
Well, we're, we're already beyond July thirtieth, but.
That means, excuse me, yeah.
And, and I did email them.
I said July one, so I was.
Yeah, and, and, and for the record, I think a week and a half ago, I emailed them, I said, hey, can we get an extension on this, you kind of sprung this on us pretty quickly. Or, you know, without, way after our budget planning, I never have heard anything back from solutions on that even, so.
Well, I'm all for it, I think.
Yeah, and this takes good news for once, I'd actually make the motion that we, uh, would move forward with the unit trend, uh, server backup system.
Okay.
That we would actually pay the, Chris gave us the right number, that's nineteen thousand five hundred thirty nine dollars. Plus, an approximate thirteen hundred dollar one time setup fee upfront to save. The, the money.
Yep.
And is a three year period, and I believe everything I've heard is positive, we move forward with the interconnect system.
Awesome.
Okay.
Awesome.
All right.
Do we have the ability to bump that? Without, okay.
Yeah, Chris and I have gone over.
Yeah, we went through, cuz Trish and I planned, we had no idea, so on Datto, I think, we, we planned at least twelve thousand for cost of Datto. So that leaves us with, give or take seventy five hundred, that I can. We've got plenty of wiggle room in some of the other areas.
That, that sounds good for one, we don't have.
Yeah.
Go sell cans and.
Right, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, unanimous motion carries.
Yeah, all right, thanks for being the bearer of actually good news.
Yeah, it's nice to do that once.
You like it too.
So I guess.
I will get out of the wave.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
All right, next thing is discussion action on request for additional medical examiner investigator John Nissan. Um, by Benjamin J Paul Medical Examiner. And there is a letter, or not, I mean, an email in there.
He sent an email and just because of the timing and people working during the daytime. He's asking that this person can assist with the evening. Um, medical examiner.
And he's, I read the thing, he's out, he's in Redway, so. Yep, and, um, he's also working for Wright County doing the same thing, and they're funding the, um. Training, so we won't have any cost to that.
No.
Don't say that.
Hey.
Somebody you know.
I know, but he isn't gonna watch.
So this is just an additional person that. We live in somebody.
Yeah, right.
All the colors.
Fill the gap.
Okay.
Cuz there's, on here it said, um, where is it, now I lost it, I had it, who it said. Oh, Kenny Borla wasn't, Kenny's retiring, so we're gonna have that, and then Brittany Peters is the other person. Who's the examiner, so since Kenny's retiring and Kenny stays on and wants to do. You know, this part of it.
Right.
We're really gonna need somebody.
Was this an action item?
Yes, it is, discussion action.
I'd make a motion that we accept, uh. John Nissan.
Nissan.
Yep.
By the recommendation of Dr. Paul for, to help fill in on the medical examiner.
I'll second it.
Thank you, second, okay, we, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous motion carries, all right. Accept and place on, um, file MMP short form annual updates for Elmer Finisher Farm number six three eight two seven. Humboldt twenty three, number six seven eight one five, Bush Finisher, number six four six nine. And Watusha Finisher Farm number six three eight two six.
You know, the one of them, and.
Yes.
Everything in order, I make most of those.
All second. All right, with a motion second, a little in favor.
Aye, aye.
Any unanimous motion carries. Okay. Looks like committee reports.
Well, let's say committee Tuesday, the first, I didn't make a deal. Hey, this past Tuesday, um, August first, I had a building families board retreat. Over in Kerrigan that day. And that evening, I had a bike trails meeting again here in Humboldt. And that is, uh, is for more discussion, and I think I mentioned this before, the heart pack thirty, which will be September sixteen. Just tying up the details for the fundraiser for the trail system. And that's my two official things last week. Yeah, meetings last week.
I had one on Thursday, uh, up here, we, the group. Met for the Bundy Property Meeting, FYI, the. The paperwork. The tenth, is that right, Trish? I think it was the tenth. Uh, will be submitted, and hopefully, uh, we can move forward with. Depending on what the judge. How he replies, but it'll. At least football and motion for Thursday, the tenth. With all I had.
All right, and on, um. August first Tuesday, we had a safety meeting here at the courthouse. And then on Thursday, the third, I went to Des Moines for an ISAC legislative, um, committee meeting. And, um, it was really very interesting. Um, just talking about what programs or what legislation we want to see either move forward or not, what we're opposed to or not. It'd be then in August, when we have our annual meeting, um, there'll be a meeting regarding what. We want to, so if there's something that wasn't submitted at the time can be done, talked about at that time also, but. Um, there's a few things that, um, look pretty interesting. Of course, mental health is always on there and eminent domain.
I was gonna question, wow.
Juvenile detention. Um, everybody that I talked to that was at the state is very upset with. The mental health and how we've lost our local control of that.
Also feel on eminent domain.
Eminent domain.
I'm sure the government pipeline was.
Oh, it was a huge, huge topic, um. That's why we can get, it, everybody's gonna have to start talking to the legislators. Because governor is for it. And which is sad, I'm very, very surprised that she is for it. So, we've gotta get these rural legislators on board. And, um. For a lot of these things, if the rural legislators would get on board and really listen to their constituents. A lot of the things that had gotten passed these last few years would not have gotten passed. But everybody's just jumping on board and following the, the party line, which sometimes the party line isn't right, let's face it. We've gotta do what's best for our counties and for our areas. And, um, they're not doing it, and that was the big topic of conversation, there's a lot of rural people on this legislative. There's, there was a couple of urban ones too, um, Scott from, um, Potawatomi County. Um, I think Scott's asking, but it doesn't matter, but he's on education with me too. Um, yeah, so there's a lot of disgruntled. Supervisors right now, but they're not listening to us, the legislators.
I heard and, and I didn't hear the whole story on K H B D this morning, but. They said something to the effect that there's three areas up in North Dakota that have declined now. So how the heck are they gonna get pipeline to North Dakota, which North Dakota falling up and saying, we don't want it.
That, right, we don't want it. Yeah. So it, it's gonna be a huge topic, but it's, again, it's gonna.
I mean, there's so much money in this pipeline industry, it's, it's.
Well, it's all subsidy.
They've already laid out a ton of cash.
Yeah. Yep, they're making money on the subsidies of it, just like everything else, wind energy, solar energy, everything is all subsidies, that's how they're making.
That's all taxpayer money too.
Yeah, it's all taxpayer money.
So, there's a, there's a select group of people that make money on that. And it typically doesn't come back to the taxpayers.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with, thanks for going to that, and I agree with your statements.
Thank you. But we gotta get everybody on board, we got it, we really gotta get the supervisors fired up to talk and just really get the constituents. Um, fired up so that they start calling, cuz until we start inundating the legislators with phone calls, letters.
Yeah, if they're not harassed, they don't.
My husband was great, and he was gonna give us their copy, and did you get a hold of Clarence?
I have not, sorry, I have not.
Well, that's funny, but we were gonna.
I did talk to Jeff Ice, Jeff Ice is also on this committee. So, yeah, so I did talk to Jeff, but I haven't, I mean.
Well, we know the folks that represent us in Des Moines, and we've been now on the start of that legislative session next, uh, January, we do this, Scott words.
From Potawatomi. Oh, you know what? I knew that, yeah, Bill, Scott Bill, if I look at my stuff, maybe I'd see all the. But, um, yeah. The other thing is too, and I, I, I don't like to, to say this, but we talked about this in the meeting too, is. If the legislators are not listening to the county supervisors, maybe it's time the county supervisors start looking. To who will start listening to us. And legislators have got to realize, they're all afraid that Kim Reynolds is gonna get rid of them, well, guess what, we have a lot of power in that too. And so all the counties have got to come together. The supervisors and really stick up for our counties and our areas and look to who is gonna do that. So if our legislators aren't gonna do it, then maybe we need to step up and. And do some of that too. I'm throwing that out there for everybody.
You mentioned it in your speech, or your comments.
Well.
That, the, their constituents, the constituents of the senators and representatives that represent anybody's area in the state. Their constituents need to hear from them.
Yes.
That's the people that get them in there, and they are there as we are, just sort of the people, not the party.
Right.
So, once they become aware of that, you're absolutely right, it will make a.
The sad part is people have gotten complacent with politics.
Oh, yeah.
What's, was, and it, and it's just a fact, I mean, over the last, I wanna say ten, twenty years.
Yes.
You know, how many of the younger generation are voting and showing them, I mean, I can still remember being in government class. And I was gonna be eighteen, and Mr. Bass, oh, I'll never, I'll never forget, he's, I mean, he. Drilled into us how important it was for us to stand up and to be heard, and I have never missed a vote since. Well, no, I take that back, I didn't miss.
Well, we'll forgive you for missing one.
Take, well, I, I did, I did miss one on.
But you're absolutely right.
Well, I understand when this stuff goes to North Dakota, it's not gonna be contained, they're just pumping it into the ground, right?
Well.
There's chains, there's tanks.
Caverns, yeah.
But would they allow them to do that with cogmative, or would they allow, well, I'm serious.
I know they do it with gas down in Southern Iowa.
They do it down there, and they do it around Kansas City too.
So, but I don't think they'd allow hogging.
Well.
It's a good thought though.
I don't wanna make anybody mad, but it's just one of those things that until you figure out what we're doing up there and.
Yeah.
Will it be contained?
The whole idea of it. I mean, our corn needs carbon to grow. And we're gonna take carbon out of our atmosphere that grows our corn and pump it in the ground, you know, I don't know.
To me, it doesn't make sense, honestly.
It does, there's none of this that makes sense, it's all a feel good. I think it's a proposition. Yeah. Politics, the feel good proposition, because, well, we could be on all of our soul boxes, but obviously. The demographics of the country, nobody lives in the rural areas anymore.
Right.
They all live in cities, and they don't have the mindset, obviously, we're here, we understand rural communities and rural functioning. Uh, it sounds great, green is all, it's wonderful, but it makes no sense.
But the reality.
The reality is not there, right, but those people don't operate in reality.
Right, and they don't wanna hear the reality either.
That's gonna dissolve everything, but it's really gonna solve nothing, and we're all paying for it.
So, I'm gonna ask a question on this resolution twenty three twenty two about the Sally Port. Are you guys going to come back after you meet and? Possibly what raised that six hundred thousand, if we cut down to the bare bones, were the way he talked. That's the way. I mean, he was happy with that bid at six fifty nine, but we just have to figure out how to make that. Not exceed.
Personally, I think that's gonna be a big topic of discussion.
Doesn't have to go to.
The thing is, it goes over six hundred thousand, it has to go to a referendum.
Yeah, that's a good, I couldn't do that.
A referendum.
Referendum, okay.
We can't, we can't just do it. That's true, not this year, next year they raise that. Next year, it's seven hundred and eighty thousand, but it doesn't take effect until the calendar year. Is it calendar year or July of next year? Calendar year, we thought, Cole, you would know, isn't it calendar year? We thought it was July first, but then.
I read it on Friday, I don't remember. I have, it's twenty twenty four.
It's, but it's not, it didn't, it didn't change in this fiscal year, so it's gotta be. You, you could do that, but. We may have to take a hard look at that. Another thing that come up in the news recently is Webster County is considering building a new jail. Well, if that would happen. We could send our prisoners there.
That would be referendum, I mean, they're gonna have to take that to the.
That would, oh, yeah, there would be a huge, huge.
But the other side is that you're. Sitting there waiting.
Right.
For time and.
Yeah.
Once we lose, once we lose our jail, we can't come back.
Right.
No.
We're lost our grandfather.
Yep.
We don't wanna lose.
And we always have to have some sort of facility there for what they bring in, somebody. It'll be an interesting discussion, but we're gonna have to figure something out.
Well, I heard, I thought I heard Cole whisper the seat cover fifty nine grand, so.
No, no, I don't think you will.
Well, I guess that's what I was curious to know.
Yeah, and then I don't, I don't know the rules on that. Whether when the price come in, if that's the referendum price, or if, oh, we got a hundred thousand of our own, we'll throw in, so then it doesn't have to go to referendum, I don't, I don't, I'm not clear on the rules.
I'm not an attorney, but I, I would think you'd be able to use your cash, I think it's for just for bonding.
For bonding.
Yeah, so I would think that. That would make sense.
Yeah.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I can switch a couple with you, that's like.
Neither is one that I'm thinking of, I don't wanna be on the.
Okay, anything else?
I think we've got it discussed pretty well.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.